I'd like to call the Village Council Regular Meeting, January 8, 2019, to order. First of all, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
A quorum, okay. The second thing we have on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, changes, subtractions?
Are we going to go over the consent agenda now? Like, pull from that?
I think when we get to the consent, I mean, we've gone to the, when we get to the consent agenda, we can pull the table.
You can pull from the consent, if you want.
We're going back to, we can pull it now?
Well, I-
You're to do it now.
You're to do it now?
I think, I think the procedure is to go ahead and do it now.
Okay, go ahead.
B, I'd like to take those off. They're crazy long. And there's a lot of stuff wrong. Is there any way that we can have them to the high-level executive summary that I thought we were going to do? Because they are, I mean, I only got, I didn't get through the entire first meeting, and there is so much stuff that Mary said, that said it was me, and I said, and said it was Mary, and so, if we can, somebody, somebody's got to go through these and pare them down, because it's crazy long.
This way.
So if we can pull those?
I don't mind pulling it. I actually don't, I don't, I'll just say, I don't, I don't mind the length, but having a lot of stuff to read, right before the meeting was a little difficult for me, but I, so I don't mind pulling them.
Yeah, and just, there's a lot of stuff that's wrong. Like, these people, you know. You guys are mixed up a lot in here. Again, I had to sit there and listen to the tapes again, so.
Okay.
If we can just pull those, and maybe you guys can go through them, and-
Well, if council wants me to revise them and do, do the executive minutes as, that's stated in your policy, I'll be glad to do that with a motion.
Are they currently verbatim? There's just errors?
They're, I mean, I don't know that they're totally verbatim-
They're pretty detailed. I don't know if they're verbatim all the way through, but they're pretty detailed.
I feel like the closer verbatim is more transparent to the public. If there's errors, you know, it takes a lot of-
But your policy that you passed was executive minutes, which are high-level minutes, so it doesn't, it takes out all of some of that innuendo.
We were also doing strict verbatim when we didn't have somebody.
Well, executive summary just means that it's not verbatim, right? I mean, then it varies between authors, what's executive and what isn't.
My understanding is what we passed is, it was getting in. If we wanted to go verbatim, then that would be done by the person requesting it. So there wasn't any money spent in it. And when we passed the executive, it was basically, discussion was made on this topic without necessarily going in, unless a council member said, "I want this on the record." The discussion was about X, Y, Z, and a motion was made by, you know, Councilman Epps, and it passed unanimously. So it's, it's, that's what, my understanding was what we passed, the high level. But if you read these minutes, they are pretty detailed, and to Kim's point, a lot of them are, they've got the people wrong, or it's not what certain people said.
Are these minutes in question, the ones that, that we did in house or were they not?
No, no, these were the transcripts, not in-house, with the exception of November. I did November, right. Which I didn't get to-
Right. So it is a separate company.
If we already paid for verbatim, and they exist, why would we trim it down? It almost feels like we're cheating somebody that wants to look back. No one's looking back tonight. But in a year, maybe they want to look back.
Right.
And if there's more material, if I said something stupid and they want to read about it, is there?
Yeah. My argument would be, Councilman Epps, is that we would direct them to the audio portion of it, if they wanted to get verbatim, because they can hear what someone said or didn't say in that. And a lot of these are supposed to be time stamped, if I'm not mistaken. They can get to it fairly quickly on, it's what we're doing going forward anyways. But what I think Councilman Vandenberg's saying is that what is happening is, because they're going so in-depth, it's causing, which we should, we should read them to make them their right, but they're so in-depth that they're, is it, is it really worth it? And then if we're finding that, okay, they've got these two people crossed, now we're really confused, and that you're really not getting the right information. So, that's the only thing. What I would propose is that we do table it, and maybe this time, because now we're spending money again, when they were supposed to do it at high level, if you will, and they are doing it verbatim. Do they understand high-level executive minutes, or is that us?
What they told, what was presented was, they, they have to start with high level. They, excuse me, they have to start with verbatim. They're, they're putting it down. These services are doing it pretty quickly. And then it's extra work to turn it down. And then that in itself is, is what you consider high level, what I consider high level, and what they consider high level, could be three different things, so. And I wasn't trying to spend a lot of time on this. I'm just saying, if they already exist verbatim, it seems counterproductive to cut them down.
And I don't think they're verbatim, but they're detailed.
And who decides where they get cut down?
I don't think they're verbatim. I think they're just, you know, detailed.
Yeah, they're very, yeah.
And I'd just like to say, as someone who has gone back into meeting minutes when I really need to, just this past week, there was a question over whether an ordinance had been passed. I personally prefer the detail. I mean, to me, this executive summary has always meant, you know, a summary. I mean, like you said, one person's version of a summary is different than someone else's, and we've already spent the time. So I, I'm perfectly, if mistakes have to be corrected, so be it. I just don't have any trouble with the detail, and I'm sure anyone of the public that wants to actually know what happened in the meeting is going to appreciate the detail. It's, it's a lot easier to read minutes than it is to go through audiotape. But that's, that's where I stand.
I mean, I didn't bottom on it, it just needs to be pulled, and somebody's going to have to go through them and pick out all the mistakes.
Okay.
It's just going to take forever, because-
Did you make notes to give to Barbie on any of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the first one.
On the ones that you-
I'm a little confused. What minutes are we talking about now?
The ones that are on the-
On the consent agenda.
Right, but do we have a copy of them? We have a copy of the two minutes?
They're in there. They're all in there.
What's it, what's it?
All of them.
All of them?
I only, I had to, I had to sit there and start listening to the tape for eight, nine, because I was like, I'm pretty sure they're not talking about me there. And so I had to go sit there and find it and listen to it. I'm like, okay, that's not me.
My guess is by the time you cross-reference Kim's with mine, you're going to find out who's saying who.
Right. But then sometimes it was me, and sometimes it was, like, it's just-
But I'll probably remember what I said, and you're going to probably remember what I said.
So who did the verbatim minutes?
They're not, they're not-
The transcription. So if you look at this, this is-
Very detailed. Just detail. On a normal basis, we're not going to have this many minutes at once. We were just trying to catch up, so we can kind of clean slate, start all over again.
I always have the impression we had verbatim minutes from a court reporter. Have you read them?
That's for the May 31st meeting minutes.
That's for the main, it's an unfinished business.
That's not a issue.
Yeah, but we passed a rule, basically, and that was done with the prior council, from my understanding is right, that we just wanted high level, that was basically, discussion was made, and if they were going, unless a councilman wants on the record for it to be in the record, you can state that, and, you know, as they're listening to it, they can add that into it. But if there's discussion going on, I mean, this, if you look at this, this is a lot of-
But is it hurting anyone if we-
It's certainly not hurting anyone, but it's also, there's extra, I mean, time that, that is taken on this, especially if it's for us to go through it and then correct it and then send it to her, then it's, like, if I look at it from a high level and says, "Okay, yes, I remember that, that vote coming up, and that's how we voted, I know there was discussion about it." Now if someone says, "Well, you said that," you can go back to the tapes to determine if they said-
I mean, I think we wanted high-level minutes, but I thought we said that if, particularly any councilperson wanted verbatim minutes, then it would be their obligation to transcribe the verbatim minutes and then give it to the clerk, and then we would, she would distribute them, and if we had any corrections, we wanted to make, we would make them and-
That's correct.
And get them back, so I mean-
So verbatim was only if a councilperson suggested, requested it.
Right.
They already said that mine was blank.
No, and I mean, I, I mean, I agree with you. I don't think we need to do extra work, but somebody's going to have to do extra work to make sure they're right.
And for the matter of time, because we could probably discuss it a lot as far as a thing, I would say, let's table it and review it, and then make sure everything's right, or make your corrections, because there's, there's probably a good two hours of reading or more.
So we're definitely going to table it, but I just need to make sure that direction is clear to staff, as to, we're not going to change, like, the, the format right now. We're just going to go back and correct the years.
For the, for these, yeah, I think that's right. But I think, I mean-
And if the council wants to entertain what high-level minutes are, I'm okay with that, and rewriting that.
The service now, right?
We're finished with the service.
Right, but then what are we going to ask whoever's doing the minutes, or what are we going to ask them to do? High level?
Whatever she was doing before, right?
High level.
Which was high? Okay. So we're all okay with tabling that, then? Is that okay?
And you're just going to go back and correct?
I'm just going to go and revise what, who said what, yes. Yeah. Who said what, and all.
Because in some of the motions, I'll, I'll show you what I've got tomorrow.
Okay. And I made a commitment to Christina, that if I supported the tabling, that I would try and make a concerted effort to get them done this week, so I'll keep reading. Hey, are we going on to the rest of the-
I don't know. Do you have anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I have a couple of changes. One, I haven't done that. I'd actually like to add the May 31st, 2018 verbatim meeting minutes. They're currently designated unfinished business, item F, and add them to the consent agenda, and designate it consent, item E.
Are those your, your minutes?
The verbatim minutes, yeah. Not my-
No, the attorney verbatim.
Just the verbatim, yeah. Just to make it simple.
Did you all get a chance to look at those and review that?
I have some corrections from when, normally I'm quoted in minutes, so I don't care, but because I am, I have some corrections of things that I said.
Okay.
Because I was on the phone, so I think it was probably hard for the audience to hear what words I said.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not ready to approve this.
Put that on the consent?
No.
Okay. So do we need to take that to a vote?
I'm happy to keep them on, but it's fine. You can vote on it separate if you want.
So by leaving them on unfinished business, we would make your corrections, and then what else? Is that what we're talking about? Because I don't know what else we're discussing.
Or have a discuss, well, because there's three sets that are in the agenda.
There's only, there's only one set of verbatim minutes.
Correct, but there are three sets of the, that meeting minutes in here. So I think we need to talk about those.
So my current proposal, and I'm, this is what I'm putting on the table, and we can vote separately if we need to, is to just take the verbatim meeting minutes and place those on the consent agenda, only because these minutes have been outstanding for, like, nine months now, and they've consistently been on there for, I don't know how many meetings now.
Right, but it's also part of a-
Yeah, I think we should just leave it in unfinished business, then we can discuss it.
Okay, I'd just like to call for a separate vote, just to be sure that I'm, I'm clear. Also, I'll place a motion on the table to move the verbatim meeting minutes to the consent agenda. For May 31st, 2018.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
You say you have corrections?
I do.
You have corrections?
Yes, there's been two notes so far.
Have you already given them to Barbie or-
Add them.
So, can we-
Have they heard?
We can. I just know that, from what I've heard, that they went through three different audio recordings from three different perspectives, and broke down as much of the audio as they could, so.
Right. But how about this, what could I suggest, before we take the final vote on that, is that anyone who has corrections, and it sounds like you do, Melanie, to get them to Barbie, where she can correct it, and then we look at it again and put it on the consent for the work session. Is that possible? This way, you get your corrections to her, you send out the revised verbatim, we have time to look at it, make sure everything is right, and then approve it at the next meeting. If there's anything else, then we pull them and discuss them at the work session, or whatever. Is that-
I'll just say that these were put on in December, so it's been a whole month since then, and they are the council's minutes at the end of the day.
Well, you have a motion on table, I vote aye.
I do. I don't know my notes.
Nick, where are you at on that? She still has corrections, but she's asking for-
Yeah, I mean, these were verbatim minutes done by a court reporter. Were they submitted to the court? I mean, were they, were they already submitted? I mean, I, I mean, I'm hesitant, because our attorney's saying she has-
Yeah, remember that there's still pending lawsuits.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean.
So your corrections, the court reporter couldn't get right, but you know what you said.
Correct.
So you want to correct them, but you haven't done that yet.
No, I have a few notes, but there's been two other sets since then, so I had no idea if you guys were going to adopt these, adopt the summary that Barbie did, or adopt the most recent summary that Mary's done. So there's been three different sets that have been handed around, so I didn't know what to put this, my attention on, now that I know. I mean, I could probably even get them done, you know, while y'all are talking about other matters. But I have one sheet already corrected. I just want to make sure I haven't missed anything else.
I mean, I'd like to at least give the opportunity to make corrections, and, I mean, as fast, as soon as we can. I mean, I don't know if it can be done this meeting, but you know.
I mean, I'd like to read them again and listen to the tape again, so we can push it in the next, to the, whatever work session.
Well, right now, it's on unfinished business. We're talking about moving it off on consent. So if we're not doing that, then it stays on unfinished.
The motion, whether it passes or fails, whatever it is, it's acceptable, but-
So we're on this motion first, if it's, then, and then if someone wants to remove it from, you're welcome to remove it from the unfinished business, since we have, the attorney has not finished her-
But she says she could work on it now, figure it out.
So we have a two-two, is that correct? Or you, where are you at, Nick?
I'm no.
No? Okay.
So you have a tied vote right now.
And I'll vote no as well. Anything else?
Oh, oh, for the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Also, I would like to move unfinished business to after the village hall item. The entire section, the entire section of unfinished business to, we have no designation, so after village hall.
To put village hall in front of unfinished business?
Uh, no. It wouldn't be moving unfinished business behind village hall, only because we're going to keep new business where it is.
So we're doing new business before unfinished business?
We're, we're doing new, it would, it would look like new, uh, new business, village hall, and then unfinished business. Yes. That's my proposal.
Now, Sabina, you want to keep new business where it's at, because there's topics that relate to village hall?
Yes. Staff asked if we could go through those first.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
And then unfinished after village hall?
Yes.
Anyone have any objections, or? Okay. Anything else?
Oh, and I'd also like to table unfinished business, item B, the community survey question approval. I have a ton of questions and corrections that need to be looked at.
Okay, so, I, I will ask you, because I understood that that was possibly going to be, so my question would be, is it not something that we can talk about here, since we're the ultimate deciding? Because they worked on it, we've been, we seem to keep tabling this survey, but if you have questions about it, can we not discuss those questions that you have?
I'm sorry, you said we keep tabling it?
Yeah.
It's the first time I've ever seen it.
I think it's, I think it's been tabled, the, the survey's been tabled in the past, and so-
It hasn't been on our-
Not on the council agenda, it hasn't.
Okay. But if you have questions on it, because they worked on it, they have an approval. Is that my understanding from planning board? They approved it?
Yeah, I haven't been through the whole thing myself.
I think there is still some underlying questions on, on the survey itself.
They, they did approve it with a few changes that were supposed to be made, and Kelly Case is, is back here in the back, she was kind of the chair with the survey subcommittee. We had some, a couple of questions that Mark Peterson was finalizing, I'm finalizing one, so Mark just finished that yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm not sure if the entire board's had a chance to review it. I've only had comment from her, so.
We've, we've never seen a final product, like a final finished draft, but in essence, we have approved what, what we come up with, so.
Was the final finished draft not what we saw that was sent out yesterday?
The survey that I took yesterday?
Minus Mark Peterson's suggestions.
And we knew to some-
And then one that I had to get correct.
All of planning board look at it and give their final approval before we see it? I haven't been through it as is, and now you're telling me there's some adjustments to be made. So I'd like, all of planning board to have seen the entire survey, finished product, before we see it, much like anything else planning board produces.
They have a meeting the 15th, so we can-
We should have it ready for us to approve then, the next meeting?
At the 31st. Is it going to have a meeting at the 31st?
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you guys all right with that?
Yeah.
By then, hopefully, you guys will be able to see your full.
I thought it was pretty good, though.
Yeah, I did, too. I went through it all. It takes about 10 minutes to read it. It looked pretty good. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. Robert?
I'm good. Thank you.
Good. And the only thing I would like to encourage is a hard stop again, if that's okay, so we don't go on forever and ever. Let me shut my phone off.
That'll help with the minutes, too.
What time?
What, what time would you think is? 7:30 would be great. I don't know, are you going to go three hours, three and a half hours, 10 o'clock? 9:30?
Can you do it in an hour and a half?
I'd love to do it in an hour and a half. So we'll shoot for 9:30, is that all right? Okay, shoot for 9:30.
No, not with me, it isn't. 8:30? No, I thought our hard stop that we were calling for before was 10:30. Was that, was the, isn't that somewhere in a, in a procedure or policy somewhere?
Yeah, we went over an hour over that one, so let's make a goal at 9:30. See where it takes us.
Okay. All right. And that's all I have. So I'll need a motion to-
It's over the last hard stop.
I'll need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have public comment. We have the list. Reminding anyone who signed up for public comment, name and address, and let me give you three minutes. Talk about whatever. I got my phone, Nick's phone. It's getting beat up, thank you. Two speakers? All right. Again, name and address, and three minutes on the clock, and first up, I have Rob Guybel.
Well, that short list ought to keep you on track, man, for your hard stop.
Yeah.
Rob Guybel, I live at 3616 Sandalwood Lane. You know, the past year's been a tumultuous and dynamic year for the council, and as a result, it's been an equally dynamic year for the village as a whole. If the accusations of misdeed, potentially illegal activities, ranging from campaign finance abuse to illegal meetings weren't so serious, they'd make a great drama, perhaps a soap opera. Unfortunately, the accusations are serious. In October, councilperson Vandenberg made a speech about wanting to end the accusations and move on. To this end, she said she'd launch an investigation. And while that speech was long on a motion, it was short on substance. Dozens of Marvin citizens have asked, what about the status of the investigation? Hearing nothing and finding nothing in the public sector, I wrote to Ms. Vandenberg on December 9th, and asked for an update on the investigation. Here's a copy of the email that I sent to Ms. Vandenberg. Pass that around, if I can take a look at it. Unfortunately, the subject, when Ms. Vandenberg replied, and she did have the courtesy of giving me a reply, she said only that she'd provide an adequate update at the council meeting the following day, and I should get any information from the meeting or from the audience audience. Unfortunately, the, the meeting took place and the subject situation never resolved. There was debate over whether the investigation should be done as a council as a whole, or just Ms. Vandenberg's efforts. And the council ended the discussion with Ms. Vandenberg saying she'd address it. The fact is that the entire council, the mayor, and the whole village is now overshadowed by this dark cloud of actions of this group of elected officials. And while much of the pain that you all are complaining about is self-inflicted, nevertheless, is a cloud. And you can't be taken seriously if you can't clear the air and dispel the accusations once and for all. I noted in an update to citizens that I applauded Ms. Vandenberg for seeking an investigation. I also noted that you should be careful about what you wish for. I suspect this is the case with this investigation. Ms. Vandenberg's idea was probably raised out of emotion, quickly and quietly squashed with political pressure. After all, it's not hard to surmise without much stretch that the mayor, some board members, council members, and others may want nothing to do with a true thorough, complete, and comprehensive investigation. On the other hand, it's hard to understand why the mayor wouldn't provide real leadership to the council and to the community by demanding a broad, independent investigation into the actions of the mayor's office and the council from the last campaign through today. Yes, it will cost some money, sure, it's going to take some time. Yes, it may be risky, especially if there's something to hide. But each of you signed on to serve the community, there's an expectation of the community you do this with honor and unquestionable integrity. Each of you deserve to have a clean slate. The community deserves to have the clouds removed and trust in its local officials to be restored. So, Mr. Mayor and council, I urge you to be proactive, or understand the consequences if your integrity will forever be shaded. It's really a choice that you have. Thank you for giving me that.
Thank you. Kathy Hitchcock.
I brought my own time. It was really, my name is Kathy Hitchcock, I live at 218 Wofford Square in Tullmore, South Virginia. I was reluctantly deciding to come tonight. I didn't really have time to write out everything, but I have been concerned, because the Tullmore Phase 2 trail was supposed to be completed this fall. I was told verbally that the survey had been completed, on questioning people, I was told to speak with Laura Carnow. I came to Village and Marvin and sat down with her. She had no clue what, what paperwork, to re-register the paperwork between the counties she was talking about. I gave her my cell phone number, she never called me back the next day. I've gone to PRG meetings, and it seems, it seems like it's kind of a vagueness that has suddenly engulfed everybody. I've gone to PRG meetings and it seems, it seems like it's kind of a vagueness that has suddenly engulfed everybody. I read the minutes that are to be approved tonight, and I read, and I, and I read through August, and now I'm hearing, well, who said, uh, Village and Marvin was supposed to build the trails in Tullmore? Really? Really, folks? Really? Well, I'm sure you have it in the paperwork that I've paid over two thousand dollars a year for over three years to pay for all that lush lavish landscaping on Tom Short Road in the middle of the road, on the other side of the road that backs up to Candle Hill Creek. My only amenity in that subdivision was supposed to be walking trails. The signs weren't there. The Pulte said walking trails. The signs are still there with Amber Meadows. And we have some discussion now that the funding that was set aside for our Tullmore now is going to go into some little general pot. And then we're going to have a, a survey, uh, and other people now who have no knowledge of the history of our subdivision, how we originally started with, uh, natural trails that were going to be cleared by the Boy Scouts. And then we had the brush monster machining come through that left stumps everywhere. And how, I had to go to Melody Graham after Amber Meadows, Pulte built the trails. And I said, Melanie, you never had any engineering specs for the trails. And thank God Derek came along, that you hired somebody who took the ball and ran with it and looked beyond six square miles of Marvin and said, hey, we need to up the ante. We need to modernize ourselves. There's nothing rural about Tom Short Road. Why do I have to pay for it? That's a huge amount of money, over two thousand dollars a year, folks. That's too much money. No pool, no tennis courts. I always promised walking trails. I want to see the walking trails. And we have the gravel parking lot, and I just want to put one more to sense it. The problem is when, when vehicles pull in, in the, in the parking lot, they drag stones into the front of our entranceway. Now I'm driving over stones. And Derek has looked into it. He's talked about putting an asphalt, uh, barrier five foot, and I, I hope you will approve that. Thank you.
That's much more pleasant. Won't stop, though.
Twinkle, twinkle. Thank you, Kathy. And Kelly, you're down here, but do you want to speak?
No, no, I just signed in. I thought that.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is, okay. Oh, she did say no.
No, I said no.
You did say no. Just want to give you that opportunity. I appreciate it. You're the only one that signed in. All right, thank you all. Um, next up, we have, we don't have any presentations today.
No.
Um, real quick on that note, I know we talked about bringing the, um, officer, Sheriff's Department in to talk about budget, right? So that's for next month or?
We had decided, well, not we, but Wesley Chapel had decided to do a joint meeting with Wesley Chapel and Weddington and us with two council members and their administrator. So we've set that up tentatively for sometime the week of the twentieth, um, with yourself.
You're not volunteering? I saw that you know.
I, yeah, yeah. I'm fine with going. That's not a problem. It's just that I'd like to, I'd like, you lose the effect when they're presenting, and then we come back and we, then we tell it to council how we heard it or what we think we need. I mean, last time, I believe they came in front of us, and we decide as a council, do we need this or not?
Well, and, and at this point in time, I don't know exactly what they're requesting. So I think the intent was for them to actually tell us as a group, and then from that moment, we can decide if we want to have an actual presentation or if we feel like it's something that we can come back and report with what the request is. But we'll do whatever you want to do.
Okay, so we'll still go to that meeting, but then, then now we're dragging it out a little bit further because I'm, I'm of the inclination that we just, you know, that's what we pay our taxes for. If they're going to come here and want more money for us for another officer, then present it to all of the council and their facts and in front of the community, which I think that holds a little bit more water rather than a council, two council people going and saying, oh, here's what they said, and we're just going to go with that. I mean, I.
Joe, can we all just go and advertise a, a quorum?
I mean, we can. That, that's not what Wesley Chapel requested, but it, it's not, I don't see why.
Yeah, they can't refuse us. We would just have to call and let them know that it's, you know, it's just a different time, which I'm.
I don't see why they'd have a problem.
I'm doing whichever way you want to go.
And is this a public meeting? It is? Okay.
I can make it if you guys decide you want us to talk to go.
So I can't remember the exact dates off the top of my head, but it was the week of the twenty second, minus that Thursday.
Monday or Tuesday, so it's going to be Wednesday.
Okay. I, I don't have the email pulled up right now, but I'll send it to y'all tomorrow, if that's okay.
I mean, I, I got no problem going. I just would like to, to have them come here and have our folks here instead of having Marvin people have a go with Wesley Chapel to learn about, to learn about, uh, the, um, if we need, if we do or don't need a, uh, another, because I think that's where they're going, right?
Uh, uh, that's what I've heard, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
They haven't made an official request, so.
Well, I'll tell you what, maybe we'll discuss it at the work session to see if we add it on the agenda for February's meeting, and then we'll know by then, okay? Sorry about that. Um, next up, we have administrator's report.
So I have a few different things in terms of. So I sent these priority forms out to you all, um, a couple of weeks ago and trying to get them back for preparation for our capital improvement plan. So if y'all could kindly fill those out, um, and give them back to me by tomorrow or the next day, that would be great. Steph has a plan to get a capital improvement plan set before you all for our February meeting, and we need some time to, to kind of put this information together. We don't need any identifying factors on the form. We're basically taking the aggregate totals for your priorities and just kind of combining them all and seeing which priorities rank the highest so that we, as staff, can come up with financial priorities for our capital improvement plan. This is our five-year long-term plan. So you don't have to write your name on them. You don't have to email them to me. You can send them to me anonymously. There's a folder inside of Village Hall at the sign-in sheet. You can come by there whenever you want. Just put them in the, in the box. Does anybody have any questions about it?
I don't want to be anonymous. I, I'd say there's things on here I don't even want to consider. So when we talk about priority, there's going to be some blanks. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's all. Yeah.
Because we, there's twenty things on here, and there's five that we, that after years are still not complete. I don't even see why we consider sidewalks to subdivisions that don't exist until Tullmore Phase Two is done or, or the Town Hall or the Roundabout, for God's sakes. I don't, this stuff.
Yes, so if there, if there's things on there that you don't even want to entertain, you don't have to fill it out.
So go as high as we want on the list?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, email budget items. So we have our budget retreat scheduled for February. So if y'all have any specific things y'all want to discuss, we've started our list of things that we want to bring up to you all. So if there's anything that pops up that you want to discuss, um, feel free to email me, and we'll have it on that agenda. Are we going to do that on Saturday, too? If we don't finish on that Friday? And have we invited PRG and planning board to come? We have, and we're awaiting a response back from them on if they can continue or not. We actually have it on the agenda. That's the item I forgot.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're welcome. To see, to see what their dates and their, their times. And one thing I wanted to mention to y'all is we've talked about several different agenda items that over the last several months that have been pushed back, so just want to let y'all know I have a running track of things that we have discussed that y'all want to have on upcoming agendas. I'm just having to push things back to adjust workload, so just letting you know. If you ever have any questions, I've got a little whiteboard in my office. I can show you exactly what I've got scheduled for. February and March meetings. I'm just letting you know. Haven't forgot about your items. And then last but not least, roads. Um, we have our resurfacing schedule to be coming up here in the next couple of months. Just giving you a heads up. We will enter new contract on our roads. We did take a lot of learning lessons with this, this last process, so when that comes along, we'll readjust, readdress those things as well to make sure we cover some of the issues that we've seen. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Thank you, Christina. Um, next up, I have planning board update. You want to sit down? Would that be easier? You sure? Come on, man. Well, glad you're, glad you're back up and at 'em. Not fully, but at least you're in the right direction.
Yeah. I admit, you know, the last two meetings of the planning board I have not attended, I did the surgery before the, uh, the November one, and I was in no mood. But I, I kept up with them, uh, what they were doing by female and minutes and stuff, and I was very pleased with the progress. As was mentioned earlier, they had worked very, they are subcommittee on the resident survey. Uh, I think I'm, I'm very pleased with their work. I think they've worked very hard and presented a, um, a very good product. I understand those last couple, uh, last-minute corrections, and I'm okay with that. So, uh, one of the things, we're sort of on hold on the land use plan. We've done, as far as we feel like we can at this moment, pending results of the survey. There's no need in going through and doing something three times. And so we've, we've covered everything up to the point that we need to incorporate this from the survey. And I think they also did a report for you on the proposed Village Hall facade recommendations, which I saw those yesterday morning. So, um, that's as much as I know at the moment. Things are a little, you know, caught up at the moment. I'm not in a pretty good shape.
Okay. Um, I was just going to ask, regarding the survey, once it does go out and stuff, did they talk about, do we know how long it takes to get the information from that or?
I don't. I will ask Jessica that, um, that our call representative. I wasn't involved in the beginning phase of it, so.
Because that's a pacing item, obviously, for them. Once they gather all that information and kind of decipher, then kind of help you.
It's, it's going to be, you know, relatively quick, you know, not a matter of a couple of weeks, but, uh, not six months.
Okay.
As, as I recall.
It's through Survey Monkey, so it should be fairly simple to aggregate.
Okay. And we don't have, you're not looking at any of the things? We have no developments going on in Publix? Or any of that's come up?
I, I have a planner update that I'll get some of that. You want me to go over that now?
Okay, that's fine. Just I know as planning board, we go to planning board eventually, but we can. Is that part of your administrator's report or is that?
No, it's a separate, it's separate.
Okay, okay. We'll wait. Any, any other questions for the council? Thanks, John.
Glad to see you out.
Me, too.
And next up, I have a PRG board update.
I don't see her. I think she's still.
She's not here, so we'll maybe table that. Okay, next, deputy report. Um, I think we got something sent to us right before. Does anyone have any questions or Ed's here or?
Thank you for the traffic control. I see you all out there all the time. It's, uh, we're still getting some high speeds out there, sixty-plus miles an hour. But I see a lot, a lot of people starting to slow down a lot more than what they used to be there, so it's working. Yeah, I haven't seen anyone on the creek in a long time. The accidents is known for the turnout of them, but I mean, there's quite a few accidents this morning. But it's been pretty good.
We like that. Quiet. That's good.
Is everyone okay to dismiss Deputy Swan?
Yeah. All right, thanks. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next up is, uh, planner update.
So a couple of things. Um, Barcroft is actually ready to start construction soon. They are going through a name change. So we just started working with them this week on going through the process of getting started. Not a whole lot to report there, other than you should, you should start seeing some activity here in the next couple of months. So that'll be on your agenda.
Do you want me to add a question? I think I mentioned this to you. Did you get a chance to check to see if they submitted their bond for?
I have not, but I will check.
Okay.
I think they, I think they have. I think that we read that in the minutes.
I know that it was a condition of their approval, but I don't know that it was actually turned in. Just want to be sure. What's the name, too?
I don't know their, their name. They're spinning a day forward, too.
And this is the one that's, Vonsgrove?
Oh, over there.
Mar, did you have another question?
No, that's it.
Marvin Gardens ICD will be on, the ordinance changes will be on, um, the planning board's meeting for their next meeting, and then hopefully y'all will see it here shortly. It's real straightforward procedural changes that were done from the last meeting to make the official changes from the rezoning ordinance that were made initially. Nothing, nothing that's really serious or anything. It's just procedurally what, what we need to do. So y'all should see that soon after they approve it.
Will that come as a consent item or is that something?
We can put it as a consent. It's, it's not a big deal. Basically, what it means is we had a lot of exhibits in the initial rezoning, and a lot of those things changed. And so we basically want to make the ordinance reflect that any changes that were made will reflect what was approved in your council meeting a couple of months ago, so just procedurally.
Okay.
Taking care of it. They submitted their, well, they are submitting their construction drawings for permits as of an email last week, so hopefully we'll start seeing some activity on that here shortly as well.
And how many homes, again?
Uh, this is just for the commercial. The residential has to be approved separately.
Okay, okay.
Just so you know, if you see in your transparency reports over the next couple of months, I do have Laura finishing up some minor items, some bond releases and that sort of thing. So she's only, last month she had ten hours, so I'm just letting you know that you might see a couple more hours to go with, with her.
From, I'm sorry.
Laura, Laura, the previous. And then I've got interviews scheduled for the end of the month for our planner position with, John Jones is going to assist me in those interviews.
Okay.
Have a recommendation hopefully at the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a couple applicants? Awesome.
Some good ones, too, so.
Good.
So like the February meeting or the January meeting?
Very, yeah.
That I have, unless anyone has any questions.
That's good.
Um, the, the process for interviewing, do, can you, um, send out the, the hiring policy with regard to the planner? I was sort of of this mind that, you know, when we talked about, um, interviewing, I've gotten mixed messages in terms of who's doing the interviewing and for what position.
Okay.
Um, so, um, you know, just, I think you mentioned, right, John Jones was going to sit in with you. I, I, I'm just kind of curious where that recommendation come from or just a thought?
Yeah, it was just a thought, just so it's not just me making the recommendation. But if anyone on council has any suggestions of anyone else or you all want to sit in, I don't.
Mary's been as well. She's been quieter and has a lot of experience with.
I don't mind. I mean, if someone else wants to sit in, it's, it's fine with me, whatever you all want to say.
Two of them together with you doesn't make a good interview report.
Okay. And I'll send the hiring policy.
I'm fine with that. I just, there's been so much.
I just volunteered for something as a passport.
There's just been so much change for so, and continuity, just in terms of having history. It's, I'm fine with it if you want. Yeah.
I mean, my, my feeling has always been that I didn't want council involved. And, I mean, we're paying, I, I, we're paying an administrator a decent amount of money to make them kind of decisions. I mean, it's our office. I, I just, I just don't want, I don't sort of want to, I don't like us being involved in, in the hiring, getting involved, and I don't think that's our position, you know? I mean, as far as interviewing and stuff, I think we need to, you know, if, if we're paying an administrator, that's, that's part of their jobs. I mean, they should be able to do it independently, you know? I really don't. I just don't like us, I just don't like council, you know, I never liked the idea of council being involved in these. Because we haven't have a great record of picking the right people as it, as it is sometimes, so.
Well, no one's, no one's suggested that I have John in the interview. I just thought it might be a good idea to have more than just me. So are y'all okay with?
I'm fine with that, too. I think to Nick's point, what we've talked about before is even creating a whole new, we're, we're separated completely, and it's really, you know, what's the charter change is what, where you have a town manager that does this. So we're, we really have no say. Pretty much, right now, it's set up as they serve at our pleasure and stuff. But to your point, having council involved in it, I mean.
That's not what the policy says, though. I mean, it's one thing to make up policy on the fly, and it's another thing to follow what the policy is. And the last rendition of the policy stated that both the administrator and the planner would be hired by the council, right? I'm not proposing, I'm not saying one way or the other, but I just don't like the idea that we're making things up. If we're going to change a policy, then we should propose the policy and change the policy. If we're going to follow, if there's a policy in place that hasn't been amended, then that policy should be followed. And in all fairness, this is not a staff issue for me. I, I think that you're doing an incredible job. You know that. Um, in fact, she, if you don't mind me saying, she even asked whether there was someone on the council including me who might be interested in sitting in. And after talking to a few of you, I heard the same thing, that we didn't necessarily want council involved. Yet again, the policy is the policy. If you want to change the policy, bring the policy, change the policy. That's number one. Number two, what I do have a problem with, though, is that essentially I'm hearing this council say you don't want a, a council person who has twelve years of experience in planning in Marvin sitting in on an interview, but you're okay with so, with a planning board advisory member sitting in who's been on the board for approximately a year. So I am going to say specifically that I do take offense to that, but moreover, and most importantly, I have to wonder why.
Well, my position, I, I don't want anybody sitting in, really. I mean, I just want the administrator to make the decision. I mean, that's.
But that's not what we're.
Well, well, I'm, I'm just saying, well, my, you know, I don't, I'm not agreeing with, with that. As far, as far as policy, I mean, the way I remembered or the way I'm thinking to council, council would be, you know, the clerk and the administrator.
And the planner.
I never remember planners being.
I thought we, uh, touched on it last year. We, we looked at the policy and we, it was the big positions, the administrator, the clerk, and the planner. I thought that's how we left it. And that's why I recommended one council member at the end.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, whatever the policy is, we've violated the policy many times by having two council members.
I don't have a copy.
On, on different things. I mean, you know, we've, we've not been consistent on what we've done. I mean, again, my opinion is I, we're paying an administrator, not, not the guy you, but whoever it is, we're paying that person a decent amount of money to be the administrator. They're the office manager. They're the person that has to be, you know, in my mind, responsible. I mean, again, if, if we. I don't, I don't, I just, that's just, you know. I don't, I don't, I just, that's just, you know, I've never been, never been in favor of counsel sitting in.
And I, I've read the policy, but it's been a little while, so I could be wrong. I thought that it was, I would make a recommendation, but I could be wrong, so I think you're pulling it up, so we can determine.
I do, and it's hard for me to know if I have the most recent one. This one says, "The village council reserves the right to hire administrative positions, including but not limited to the village administrator, senior planner, village clerk, and planner. The village council may delegate its authority to the higher personnel above to the village administrator by majority vote or additional policy provisions."
So, do we want to just vote, or, I trust Christina, but I also, you know, I have some experience, Mary has, I guess. You're right, we haven't had the best, the best record on, we all get involved, but someone with twelve years' experience certainly brings a lot to attend to.
And before you vote on, on that, if you will, we, whoever else is involved, we're going to come to the board and make a recommendation, so you would see all the qualifications, y'all would ultimately make the decision, we would just be involved in the interview process, that's how I envisioned it. So, if that helps with any of your thought process, that's kind of what our intent was.
Right. I mean, my, my thought was, if we're going to have anyone interviewed, then just have it a special meeting to interview that person, or a second interview, or whatever, you guys do the, you know, maybe go through a couple candidates, and here's your top two or three candidates, and then council as a whole comes in, and I, I have no problem with that, but to your point, I, I probably want to stay more away from it, so, and no influence at all, and just, I mean, I'm looking for you to, to find the best, you know, planner based on their things without any, any other, you know...
We have them scheduled already, I'm trying to pull up the date right now, it's the twenty-ninth at ten and at two, it says two candidates.
Because the verbiage I heard from what you just said, it's an option for a council to be involved, it's not required, so, that's what I'm, that's what I heard, but, and if it's fine, we can take a vote on it, on how we're going to do it, but we need to get a planner regardless, I'd like to see it sooner than later, and I trust Christina, too, for, to find that right person.
I'm just going to qualify this by saying that it says by majority vote or additional policy provisions. What I don't have, and that's why I was asking you the most updated version, I don't know that what I have is the most updated version. This one is revised nine twenty-six, twenty thirteen, so it could have been amended. This is one of those policies that depending on who the administrator has been, and who the council's been, it's changed.
What was that date, number?
That one was nine twenty-six, twenty thirteen, the one I'm reading.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think it's much different than that one. I don't think the policy is much different than, than what the current, what Mary's got on, looking at right now.
It's changed, because I know, for example, at one point, it was just only park staff, other times, it was like, no, just the clerk and just the administrator, so it's changed over time, so you know.
The reason I volunteered, Mary, because of her experience, is because I don't feel the need to be there, I'm the man. The more, the more I, we can lean on you, the better, as far as I'm concerned. But I can't ignore the experience she brings to the table, and we haven't had the best of luck with double position for a long time. So I, I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't want that extra set of eyes, it's just two interviews.
And it doesn't, either way y'all want to do it, I don't, you know, we will adapt. I do definitely want the buy-in of council in any candidate that we select, so that, you know, ultimately would hopefully be privy to y'all to make that decision as well, ultimately.
Mary said, and I wouldn't feel the need to change that at all, just you, Jones, Scoop, I'm good.
I'd just rather keep it to you, and someone else than I get counsel involved, that's, that's my vote, we have to take it to your vote, we will. I'd ask for a motion for that, then.
Policy says we can direct, so I'll make a motion to ask council person, Mary Scoop, to sit in on the interviews, and you, I will, I think just leave the motion there.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
To allow Mary to sit in on the interview with Christina and John.
I mean, again, my, my position has been for years that I didn't want counsel involved, and I just think, I know, I'm not disputing Mary's qualifications, I know she's been doing it for twelve years, and I, I appreciate all the, you know, things she might bring to the table, but I just, you know, I just don't, I just want, I don't want counsel, I don't think counsel should be involved in this, like I said, we have, we hired an administrator, we have, we're paying good money for her, you know, and I'm not, if it turns out to be the wrong choice, we have somebody we can go to and say, well, you know, this is the person you picked. You go to a council person, and they, you know, what do we have, I mean, you know, we have somebody who's sort of hold accountable, I mean, you know, if, if for some reason, you know, again, we're paying, we're paying good money for administrator, I think we need to, you know, let her do what, what, you know, we originally hired her for was to run the office, hire people, fire people, whatever, you know, I mean, that's always been my position, it's been my position for at least six or seven years, so.
Is this a full-time person?
Full-time.
Did we have, we advertised it for a...
Well, to that point, I think that it seems that a lot of people are already agreeing that there hasn't been a good record of hiring in the past, not by any stretch to say anything for you, Christina, because I, I know how diligent you are, but we're talking about pre-Christina, and quite frankly, pre-me. I've never been on the council, I've never hired a planner or had the say in a planner, and yet I have been on the planning board and had to reap the consequences of the continued turnover on, while sitting on that board, and knowing how much the village pays in the end for those mistakes, so in order, you know, when you, if you were to ask me, well, is the ability to have an administrator, you know, to take that responsibility way more than making sure that we have someone who knows Marvin, understands what our ordinances are, and is prepared for the particular characteristic that we are, or the character that we offer, or we have, and the environment that you work in, I would definitely choose the latter, so that's...
You mean you want to warn them?
I'm sorry?
You mean you want to warn them?
I think that it's only fair that everyone know what they get into. But more importantly, all kidding aside, it's an important role in Marvin, it's probably the most important role, not to underestimate Christina's role, but planning is the number-one service that this village offers, and it has suffered in the last few years.
And I think you...
I am too, so I mean, you've got three votes, so.
I didn't realize, you were a yes?
I was a yes.
Okay, alright. So you're three yeses?
We've got three votes, so.
Okay.
So is everybody, is there a consensus that it's okay for Mr. Jones to be involved?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think if you...
That's fine with me.
I think it's okay, yeah.
Yep, okay.
I'm a no on it.
Alright, so next up we have, I lost my place here, planner, planner update, consent? Yeah, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we go into new business, if I'm not mistaken. A is consideration for approval of dispute resolution policy for village council construction projects exceeding three hundred thousand dollars.
As you saw in, in the memo that I've provided, pretty much background for this policy and the following policy, there's a statute that's in your agenda packet that basically outlines a lot of different things. The first one being the statute for some things that we talked about in the village hall, which is the contract type, project expediter, and the dispute resolution policy, which is this policy at hand here. If you note on the second page, sorry, the third page, it goes over the requirement for the dispute resolution. And this basically means any contract that we go into for a construction project, we have a dispute policy that we would adhere to if there's a dispute between us and the contractor. Our village attorney has provided a recommendation for a slight amendment to the policy that I've got proposed, which I passed out, which basically excludes the requirement of the American Arbitration Association to conduct our mediation, because it, it would be rather costly for us to do that if we had to go through that process. We would ultimately determine a mediator from, from either us or mutually agreed-upon party to go through that process for us, and hopefully come to a resolution. This is required for any contract that we have that exceeds three hundred thousand dollars.
So this one is the policy?
Correct, this, the one that I passed out is the one that I would oppose.
Okay.
Which, if you were looking inside your agenda packet, it would basically just cross out number two, starting with the verbiage where it says administered by, all the way down to that last paragraph. Everything else remains the same.
So everything highlighted in here is?
Just notes.
Okay, that's just notes.
Yeah, the, the only thing that you need to really be applicable for that statute is the very last page. The other information is relevant to your discussions that you'll have about village hall, which was all in the same ordinance. We can come back to that if you want to kind of earmark that, and I'll come back to that statute if we need to.
Okay.
Basically, and if you want me to, I can go, go over it right now, this is basically showing you the types of contracts that you can award, which I would recommend single prime, which, that's why I've got this information highlighted, it's the easiest and straightforward cut for us.
Single prime is a term too.
Correct, you have a GC that handles the entire project for you. There, there's a couple different ones, but the single prime is basically you hire a GC, they sub everything out, you're not involved in that process whatsoever.
Mary did a presentation on this last week?
Do you remember?
I remember.
Remember, I think we voted to have a GC and not have the administrator running that, or whatever.
To me, this stuff falls under what Nick said.
So the policy at hand is just for this view resolution, y'all will go over the other stuff, I just wanted to provide that for background information so you had it, so do we need to adopt this?
I have one other quick correction, in paragraph one, about halfway down, it is further understood and agreed that this dispute resolution process is based on non-binding mediation? I would take out the word non-binding, because the whole purpose of mediation is, is only, yeah, if the parties agree, and then you write a consent order and you're done with it, and those stipulations are to be binding.
So take out the word non?
Right. If they don't agree, then the mediation's in, in pass.
Okay.
So is it binding mediation, or just mediation?
It's just mediation. Arbitration is typically binding, and, and, but that's, in an arbitration, a judge, an arbitrator makes a decision, and in a mediation, the parties are entirely, they decide whether or not they want to settle, and what the terms are. Negotiated settlement back and forth.
The only other suggestion, I think we talked about a little bit, Christina, was in replacing paragraph two with the red mark, feels like that should probably read mediation should be administered by a mediation agency mutually agreed upon by both parties, as opposed to just sort of leaving it open. That's, that's my, the way I understand it most often, but...
Typically not an agency, it's a, a lot of times mediators are retired Superior Port judges, or, you know, certified Superior Port mediators.
So just even then, just changing the word administered by a mediator mutually agreed upon by both parties?
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Should we have the non-binding taken out of two as well?
So it'll read subject to?
Mediation.
Mediation administered by mutually agreed upon mediator, mutually, mutually agreed upon by both parties mediator, period. If everybody's okay with that, just make a motion.
I can make a motion if you like.
Unless anybody has any questions, just make sure it's in the non-binding.
While I wait, if you're, if only if everyone's ready.
I'm ready.
Alright, motion to approve the dispute resolution, requirements for certain Village of Marvin contracts, removing the word non-binding in paragraph one, and amending paragraph two to read administered by a mediator, agreed, mutually agreed upon by both parties.
Don't forget what Kim K. was also in paragraph two.
Okay, so I'll amend that to say removing all instances where the word non-binding exists? Or just removing that verbiage, removing mediation?
Further discussion?
Hang on one second. Mary, can you make sure you know that it needs to remove that by the American arbitration?
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
That whole sentence.
And, so I'll just amend the motion, removing the text presented as, sorry, the deleted text as presented in paragraph two.
Okay, further discussion, alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright. Next up.
So the second policy that I have here is called a hub policy. It's for historically underutilized businesses, basically minority-owned businesses. The statute's provided in here to reference the requirement to do so. It's a little bit complicated when you read it, because if you read the first paragraph, it says that you only have to have this policy if you have a hundred thousand dollar contract with state funding, we do not have state funding. However, if you read the very last paragraph, it says, basically, if you have any other project to cost over three hundred thousand regardless of state funding or not, you still have to have this policy. It's a good policy to have anyways, in case we have grant funding that comes along, and we have state funding, we already have it in place, so it's not just for village hall, if we get a Part F grant or something that we need to have this for a park project, it's there, and it's in place. Basically, what we would do is have the policy, we try to go out and make sure we advertise our RFPs accordingly, and we hold our contractors accountable for this process if we're doing the single prime, so that's how this policy would work. We did model Wesley Chapel in this policy, so it's pretty much the same thing that they have, and it has all the different requirements throughout, this would be part of our RFP process as well. This is a requirement before we do any projects of that nature of village hall. I'll entertain any questions if anyone has any. Melanie, you good with this one?
I am.
Okay. So do you need approval on this? Alright, need a motion for that? Anyone want to take that?
So no amendments, right?
No amendments.
Okay. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have considered recommendation of CRTPO Marvin School realignment.
So the only thing I can tell you on this is back in 2016, we had a realignment that was proposed, if you see the map, the, basically the map in your agenda packets. My assumption is this is no longer needed, it's not the opinion of council that we need to inform the CRTPO that we want to pursue this, so they don't have the roundabouts in here, so I don't think this project is needed anymore. They just, they did want recommendation from y'all if you were interested in this realignment or not, so.
You mean after the roundabouts?
Yeah, we're pretty much good with what, because that would be going right through our town hall.
Then I will let them know we are not interested.
Maybe a bridge over the town hall.
Seriously?
Formalities.
Like seriously?
So did you need a motion from us, or just general consensus?
Y'all just want to motion it, that's fine, and it'll...
Make a motion of no, I mean...
So what's the motion? We, the, the motion to not reconsider realigning Marvin School Road? Further discussion? I hope not. Alls in favor? Alright, moving right along, we're on village hall business, if I'm right on my schedule here. Okay, discussion, consideration, approve elevation plans.
So I, you know, at the last meeting, you had, well, Mary had sent some, well, Councilwoman Scoop, I'm sorry, had sent some information about the timeline, and kind of where we are, I'm not sure if you all had a chance to review that from the December meeting, as you all know, the mayor and Councilwoman Scoop and I met with the architect to come up with different facade options, so they're provided in your agenda packet. I did present these to the planning board, they were not grass with you on one of them. They did not recommend approval for either of these.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, we're honest.
So...
May, may I suggest something? Because this was an idea as I was doing some homework last meeting, when we were going to talk about village hall, we were getting prices, is I reached out to Wesley Chapel. to talk about Village Hall, we were getting prices, is I reached out to Wesley Chapel and confirmed the numbers, what they paid for the Village Hall, plus what was included, what wasn't including, how many, confirming square feet, and I talked to Cheryl, she's a clerk there, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah. So she had a lot of information for me, but then I also reached out to the mayor, who was there at the time, and he said that, and I like this idea a lot, because as we all know, this body of five changes every two years. And what they did when they were in the process is they formed an ad hoc committee that basically you had someone, few people from planning board, possibly one or two people from council, and you reached out to the community to say, hey, what is it that we want to see when we're, you know, because I may have some ideas of what I'd like it to be, Nick may be on the same page, but then it's your thing, but if we had, and that's what they did, it was there for a while while they were trying to get the facade, what it looked like, because I think we don't get the public involved in what it looks like inside, because staff really determines that, along with council, of what we need, but outside, what it looks like, what we're trying to accomplish, we still don't have a land use plan. I would suggest that we reach out to those that want to be involved in that decision-making process, because we're going to have to live with it for years to come, that facade and stuff, and I think, given, the only parameters to come in is that we learned when Councilman Scoot and you and I were at there is we can't necessarily put a square in a hole based on the design we have. So we are limited to what that facade looks like unless we're going to add some things, I believe is what they told me, so.
I understand that it was fact that we're limited by the fact that the interior layout would remain the same.
Yes.
And entrance, et cetera, was all set.
Yes.
And the concern that everybody else on the board.
Are we willing to back support?
As.
Yeah, I mean, it's just getting an update of what they were doing, so I just, you know, so that's okay. Anyway, so that was just a suggestion that I would have, is we're trying to figure out what that looks like, and I'll leave it to council, to any comments or anything that.
Oh, I would say that it's been through many more residents than us, it's been through a previous planning board, it's been through at least four other council members that I can think of. It had public input meetings, changing it substantially at this point, we've made a complete redesign. I think we have a hundred grand into it so far, maybe more, a hundred grand into the plans.
Probably about right, I don't have it right here in front of me.
And if anyone here thinks it worked ever, I do this for a living, I can say you will not get five, six, seven, eight, you will not get people to agree on what it looks like on the outside. The design on the inside, I think we all agree, staff came up with a lot of that design and it's functional, it's accomplishes our goals. What it looks like on the outside, we all have different opinions, and we're going to continue to have different opinions, and spend another hundred grand redesigning it because someone else has a different opinion, is counterproductive at this point.
Ninety-two.
So we have ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two, six, ten spent.
Ninety-two, six. And again, count previous councils, previous planning board, this is a project a long time coming, we have not only finished plans but approved plans, and I think it's just time to move forward.
I mean, I'm going to have to sort of echo what Robin said, I mean, I've been on council since 2007, and I believe it was my second meeting of the council that we discussed the new town hall. And we've been through, we looked at probably eight or nine different.
Eleven.
Eleven, different locations, different buildings. It's been through, I guess, three different councils, you know, we've discussed it, we've had, let's say, public hearings, we've had meetings. I mean, I think we've pretty much done everything we can, and we've talked about it for so long, I think we have the plan now, we have, we have a plan, we have some plans, I mean, I think the facade we could work on, even if, you know, as we go along, we may, you know, we can make minor changes to whether we want brick or we want, you know, things, but I think, I think at this point, we need to move forward, you know, get this, get this, you know, I'd like to see this done before, by twelve years on council.
Twelve years.
So.
And staff, though, with, you know, what the recommendation of cancel is, I do, and I just want to be upfront from a budget standpoint, I do have concerns if we are going through a complete change of footprint and all that stuff, because I don't know financially, we're okay for that now.
Just for the record, I wasn't suggesting that we were going through a whole change, but I'm just saying that we go with what, what they say we can work with without making those changes, or just changing the facade, and I think the last thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we would have needed to add a community room.
Yes.
To the right, which I thought was a great idea anyway, because there's some communities here that don't have a community room to use as an HOA meeting room, so I wasn't suggesting.
We have them, I didn't even.
That's all right, that's all right.
But we have a meeting room, but I thought we were going to let HOAs use, that's why we separated it so we had access to that first.
Well, I think when, when we talked to him, based on what we had and what we were trying to create or look at, he came back with drawings, and I think we all agreed, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if that we, is what we were showing him and what we liked, he said that would mean, the only change would mean adding a community room to up front and on the right.
Yeah, that was based on these plans that the planning board had.
That was the one, and that was just before Christina went to the architect, and they said that they would have to do brand-new construction plans from the start if we added, if we went with either one of facade A or facade B, it would require, it would add the community room, which is great, but on the other hand, that's right.
You can just add the box and call it a community room, I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like adding the room in a house and calling it a bedroom or a den, that's all they did here. And that's because we said we wanted to change the veneer, the front facade, to this, this thing, which I think we'll agree we want, but this is a whole redesign, just so everyone's clear.
Right, that was, that's the problem, is that, yeah.
Well, let me ask you this question to answer, could you, I mean, could you move forward with these plans and add that later, decide to add that later, without changing?
It's construction, you can do an addition anytime, you can add that 10 years from now, but it's a separate permit. I would advise, unless you just want to spend another 200 grand on plans, I wouldn't change what we've already paid for. And if there's a need to grow later, if we need a second community room, see, the meeting rooms, what we all envisioned, previous councils, as allowing HOAs to use, just like we use for a meeting, which we only have two a month, they would have the rest of the 28, 29 days access to that room, the bathrooms have their own door, the offices lock away from the bathrooms, and the back doors, the back door you see there, we envision getting the HOA a code or a key, so that they can access what their people have, and their response will close enough, much like also we have the department, which is a policy, and whether or not staff members have to come in, that's up to you. But we designed that so that the HOAs, there's like 20 HOAs.
I didn't have, I would, I'd like to just.
And they would be able to use that room. This community room is just, he was trying to pair it with the extra space.
Right.
And you call it a community room, you could have called it a library.
To be honest, that's what I saw. Who do you think would?
Yeah, you could have called it anything.
But tell me, I'm trying to find, I'm pulling up my plan, so there was at one point a divider, right, that, that pulled out and divided the two meeting spaces, that's not the case anymore, right?
This design doesn't need a divider, it has doors.
Right, okay.
This would be, I envision, this is our standard on the plan, so you don't pull that aside. And right over there, where that, right there where that header is, with the big opening, that's a pair of French doors. Those doors go to the offices, and the bathrooms are here on the left, and the idea is simply the offices could be locked off, because whoever's using this room has access to the bathroom, much like we do right over here.
I remember that.
So we always had a meeting room, more than communities could do.
But it says, do you know, do you remember there was like these, these collapsible doors? We don't have those, and we don't, I'm not saying we need them, I'm just curious whether they were there or not.
They were on a plan before, this room was going all the way across.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
But then, that was prior to, to when I was on council.
Okay.
And then there was this question about extra space for storage, which staff brought up, and that's where I, that's where I added my input, I said, well, what, you've got this enormous roof.
Then just go ahead.
Why don't we go up, leave it unfinished, it can be, it can be finished up later, so we added a set of stairs. Now, instead of this room being longer than this room, as you can see, we all need some more space, we now have stairs, three more cubicles back here.
That's where that room, that space went.
Yeah, we made much better use of that space.
Okay.
And now you have a room for expansion above, there's over a trillion thousand square feet in the second floor for storage, and if it ever wants to be converted into a more series.
I'm glad you, you put those two memories together, because I could remember that.
So from the original, from the original concept, you know, I think really the only
thing we're talking about, because we can't change the interior, we can't change the footprint, basically, right? We can't change any of that, we're basically talking about cosmetic changes on the outside of the facade.
These drawings I'm looking at, Nick, are, they're very pretty, but you know, the plan, it's very, and the colors throw me off, because the colors to me are pretty ugly, but the colors are, won't matter moving forward, we can change it later.
Yeah.
But the only changes on these other drawings is we have a stone front.
Right, and the columns as compared to, figure columns as compared to.
And then there's a board and baton front, you know, and I know which one I like, but I'm just one vote, I, they're all very pretty. I think what we, we could do is, is go to bid with the plans we have.
The original.
The original plans.
Group plans.
And then any contractor that bids on it could be given these additional veneers, you know, leaflet that says, give me a, your bid is based on these plans, but these are two options, give me a number for option one and option two. And then when it comes back to council, whoever, whoever we're, whoever we pick, will also have that second part of decision, which veneer are we going, which front facade are we going? It doesn't change the other three sides, it's just changing the front, but at least we know, and just my experience as a contractor, you know, the stone's going to cost more, but the, the vertical side, it's probably going to be the same, you know, it should be.
So, so basically, what I'm kind of saying is, unless we're willing to spend 200,000 more to redo the whole thing, we're pretty much stuck with.
Well, even if you've got a hundred thousand, the code's going to change since these plans were approved.
I'm saying, but at this point, it doesn't, you know, we really basically are better off approving, we're sure it's kind of stuck with the first one, and then the facades we can work on later or whatever, we can, that's not.
Yeah, as long as the footprint's not changed.
Yeah, I'm saying we could approve the footprint, because it looks like it's going to be the footprint, no matter what we.
A lot of what you're looking at here is, I can see, these, these little shed roofs, they're attached to the outside, but they're not integral to the interior.
They wouldn't require any permits or anything.
So basically, our choices are here.
And I'll just qualify and say, I didn't even put this forward as choices, I just know that I too was feeling stuck.
But these are not options. Is that what I'm hearing, is that what I'm understanding in terms of if we don't want to redo the plans?
The planning board didn't want them.
So, well, I mean, I feel like we could work with something like this, but if this changes the construction plans, then I don't know why he gave us these, if we didn't want to change the construction plans, and he, I mean, the architect.
You bring up a good point, Kim, because I, I remembered in that meeting us saying to him, could you provide, you know, he was talking about the community room, and I was under the assumption he was going to provide another option that would not change the foreplan, and that didn't happen.
He should be able to, I mean, I thought that was the whole point, that you guys went to meet with him.
When I walked away from that meeting, that's what I thought he was doing, he was taking our existing plans, and the only thing he had to do, in my understanding, was to add that room in the front to make that happen.
But that would then change the construction plans, correct? Is that right?
If you look at these sketches, these are gable roofs, right, left to right.
I was just going to say, that's the difference.
As opposed to the hip roof that's on it, there was no way this was going to look without redrawing.
You should have.
Now, the footprint, now keep in mind, he's an architect and he's very literal, so when you come to him and say, we don't want to change the footprint, that means one thing, we don't want to change the plans means something else altogether. I can build a very different building on this concrete slab than what it looks like on the outside without ever changing the footprint.
Right. Understand that, maybe.
But you, you're changing the entire plan once you change the roof. The point loads, aside from just the roof, where the loads go and all that, it changes the whole plan, which means going back in front of the county.
I'm sorry, I, I was just saying that, what, trying to recall that meeting, when, when I showed him anything with a pediment, right, which is that colonial or neoclassical type look, he insisted that he had to change the roof from a hip to a gable, and so, you know, and so from that standpoint, the minute you change the plane on the roof line, the whole, all the in-construction plans change.
Have you heard of foot?
I just remembered, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just remembered something that may, you guys may recall. Do you remember the conversation that we had with him about, he said that he could do it, but he put like a little cafe sitting area in the front, and we said it wasn't going to look right, because it was going to be pushed back, so maybe that, do you recall that?
Yes, because he said he was going to do three plans, we left it, he was going to do a good, better, and best, and the first one was not going to amend the, or put on that community room, it was essentially going to be like a plastered-on facade to create the look we wanted, but it would just be a courtyard behind, and I just made, I didn't know if it was a rush for time or some other reason, but he didn't provide that option. I don't know what to say there, other than what I mentioned a few minutes ago, which is every time I talked about the pediment, he, he wanted to go back to the gable roof line, I don't know why.
Once you change the roof, you change the plan.
Can we add this?
This amazing meeting this Thursday? Do you want to go to? I mean, because I, I walked away thinking that that's, we weren't changing the plans, we were just adding a small, that's was my takeaway, and it, obviously, that, that's, if that's the case, that we've got to change the whole plans, then I don't know.
Because I mean, these options is just, I mean, it's just different colors. So I mean, if this, I mean, if this is the only thing that we can do besides the construction plans, then, then I feel like, I feel like he needs to say that.
Yeah.
Because he said that.
He, I, Christine, I thought he told you that if you changed the plans, we'd have to go, we'd have to follow the code.
No, I'm.
And then I, so he did say that.
No, what I'm asking is, can we, can we keep the construction plans the way that they are and change the facade?
No.
Okay, so, for sure?
I mean, it's pretty, you don't have to do it for a living to look at that and see if the roofs are completely different.
Let me bring up that example.
Yeah, but I'm not saying to use this as the roof line, I'm saying, is there any other option besides this to not change the construction plans?
Do you, you know what I'm going to mention, because I know I talked about this with you, and you helped me understand this, so one of, if you look back a couple meetings, I don't know if I have it here, I, I took that and knit that front part and made it into a pediment, but, you know, again, it's, what I didn't realize is that that roof is actually a hip roof, remember that? You had to explain that to me, and so I thought, well, why can't you just take the hip, extend it forward, and make the ga, you know, make the gable that we're looking for, and that too would create, would require a new construction plan, so there seems to be very little you can do with that hip roof without changing that front.
Mary, keep in mind, and I, I don't know, you weren't around, I think Lisa was around, or maybe Robin, but before, Kim, you were on council, somebody else had a question about changing the front, or maybe it was when you just got on, and we all want everyone to be happy, so, maybe it was when you just got on and we took a stab at it, and the arch, she asked, the architect called me, and he called me, and. and it was actually Mr. Urban, I think. And at that time, it was a very different plan, but we were, we were trying to maybe get closer to the reasons, the facade. And he could only come up with one idea, which involved basically adding round columns to what we already have, because of how it affects the roof and the rest of the design. So, to be like that plan, but with round white columns, which is just, yeah, at some point, I don't like.
I took a picture of that.
Not my taste, but I'm, I realize I'm, I'm working off of ten years' worth of work, and I'm not trying to change it to my taste. I'm trying to.
Let me try to explain.
Reach a compromise.
Let me try to explain it like this, and you're, you're familiar with this. We can go, so if we went with one of these options that he presented, one and two, we would have to change the plans, not the footprint, but the construction plan. Right, which is gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars, right? No, no, the, the, the construction plans, all he's gonna have to do is change the actual, the roof lines, those sort of things, you helped me with this.
If he redraws the plans, it would cost the same as the first set of plans.
Okay. It's a hundred, so.
Hundred grand.
All hundred thousand dollars, okay.
He has to, he'd have to redraw, he can't just interchange pages, he'd have to redraw all the pages.
So if we go with, and then we'd have to go with the new building move, if we went with this, this option, this option, or this last option, nothing changes, we can submit construction plans with what we've already got approved from the county.
I'm not saying we like to like that, no, see, this is what I was hoping for, because I thought, we don't have to change the floor plan, we don't have to change the facade, but we could just, you know.
Pull it out.
Pull it out.
Question problems on there.
And what I didn't realize is that that's actually a hip roof, so even that was a construction change. That's why the roof on that is more or less just dormers. What kind of dormer do you want, is more or less the selection?
And just know that you can move forward with a request for bid, with the set of plans we have, options for these veneers, but you should also know that after that comes in, if you tell a contractor, I don't, I don't want these shed roofs, you're not, as long as you're not changing it structurally, you know, I'd have to call, or you'd have to call the, the guy that approves this stuff. But generally speaking, as long as you don't change it structurally, or the footprint, or you're not adding, which is like any circuits, or plumbing, or HVAC, uh, I can, can be changed.
So I guess with that premise, what's coming in, is a suggestion that we move forward with, on the surface, picking one of these out, and then we'll finesse more of the exterior of the facade.
I think your easiest, your, your cleanest, uh, cleanest way to put it up for bid is the actual plans you have.
Correct.
And then if you wanna give an option one, option two, facade only, and, and they have to be willing to do that, you know. If they come back with eight hundred thousand on the full set of plans, option one should say, subtract twenty thousand or add fifty thousand, option two should say plus or minus, whatever it is, that's, that's pretty simple.
We can have alternates in the bid, so if you'd like, let's just say, for example, you, you like, on this last page, both of these, we can submit those construction plans in the RFP, alternate one, alternate two, and then we'll later decide. We've gone up, just, I can't, I'm like the, thank you, sorry.
No, no, that's okay, I was actually looking for the spots.
Choosing the lowest responsible bidder, and you just look at the original, you don't add the options, am I right? You can, you can add alternates in for the base bid, whatever you decide to do at that point.
Well, and that's a good point, because the reality is, let's say, in a month, we all agree on option, let's just call it two.
Which one's two?
And a low.
Doesn't matter.
And one bidder comes in at.
Doesn't matter.
A million bucks on the original plans, but it's less than the other bidders on the one we pick. I mean, you pick that one.
Yeah, it would be the lowest possible.
That's the one you're gonna pick, right.
That's the one you pick.
So.
Does that make sense to everyone? If you, if you're technically getting one big number for the plans, let's just call them plans, and then you get an option number on that option one, option number option two, whichever one we land on, the low bidder for that option is the low bidder.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You would pick your options prior to the contract.
Two layers and scroll down.
Yeah, that would be.
You have to do that, that's the only way you can do the lowest possible.
Yes.
I did everything I could to see what I could.
And we would have the architect, well, my suggestion, would we have the architect involved in the whole RFP process, and the formulation of the alternates and that sort of thing, to make sure we're doing it right, so.
Yeah, these, these are, some of the stuff's foreign to me, but the architect knows it.
We've got some, and y'all will see that in a subsequent item that I've got here, is that, you know, it would be my recommendation to have the architect involved in that process, and we would need to amend that contract with, with them to include some of that language. There is a little bit in there, but it's really basic on the surface stuff, so we would need to amend the contract with the architect, involve more of his services for kind of the project oversight.
Is that the same as the project expediter?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The, the project expediter and to.
I hope that helps.
Yep, thanks.
See, this is.
You do something like that in the front?
That's your job, that's.
I mean, maybe that's just like decorative, and making floors and stuff like that on there, without changing anything, I don't know.
Ross.
The work the architect did in advance was not even a step, but having him come out on the same day the county inspector comes out, didn't make a lot of sense. He was, you were paying him to look at the very same old account he was.
In our current contract with the architect, he comes out twice a month, so, um, you know, depending on who we select, they do have some platforms.
Show you something, because I was taking a picture.
It's in my thirty already.
That's something you can add on to make it.
Sure.
And, and anything. And that's not a structural, so that could be added at some point.
Of all things, I'm, I'm saying is, that's sort of a, we were trying to get to that, but every picture of that is not something, let the staff picture that thinking.
Okay, and that's what he did the first time we called Urban and said, hey, can you make it look a little more, what would you call that? The architecture.
Neoclassical.
Neoclassical.
Just put it in front.
And we asked him if he could do that, that's all we were doing, was something on the front.
Well, I, I thought that could be done from a look standpoint, that, you know, so that, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, to give you, as an example.
Oh, okay.
I just completely changed.
Where you just, for the entrance.
Yeah.
Like entrance, wherever you can, I mean, because I know that's non-structural, I knew that.
Well, let me give you an example, that, there's a really pretty white and black house across from San bridge, a lot of people love that house. It's a farm, farmhouse.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
My wife saw it. So, our house, the entire, all the siding, all the columns, everything came off, and now it looks as close to that as we could get. All right, I didn't have to change anything structural, I didn't have to, nothing changed inside, ever, that she saw that house. But I didn't have to change anything, so, I changed all the siding, I added these, similar to this design, I added these little shed metal roofs, all the, I had round columns, like what you, like, Ken, I had round columns, those are all gone, now they're square columns. At the end of the day, it's the same house, it's just a substantial base.
Lipstick.
Lipstick, lots of lipstick.
Um.
Expensive lipstick.
No, I mean, that's, that's what I was coming up, based on the cost of what I was seeing, I was not looking to change the thing, I was just looking to, how it looks, I mean, what, what are we trying to create here, you know what I mean, and.
See, the problem with something like that is the door's not in the center.
That's right.
Of the building.
No, I know.
So it's like you put it over to the side, you do a little, I mean, I mean, you couldn't add something, I mean, I like that, but you couldn't add something like that, because it just doesn't look that.
This is the house that, right, that I tried to model.
Let me see.
I guarantee you, you show that to the audience, I'm certain.
So this is really popular, so what I was gonna do was, what we could do with the current house to try to.
Anyone seen this house?
Yeah, I think more than a person.
So I was trying to use the same color schemes to see if we could create, mimic it, but it's not quite the same.
So my house did not like that? But we tried to get to it, and that's.
Hundred thousand dollars later.
So I've been reluctant to tell you all which plan I like, because I am predisposed to what I just spent a fortune doing. But this plan that looks like that house is the one I happen to like the most. But, at the end of the day, like I said, it's compromised, there's been ten years' worth of it. I'm willing to compromise on any of these three plans, what I don't wanna do is spend a hundred grand redrawing plans.
No, I agree with that.
That were ten years in the making.
Mary, you had one on there that had a lot of, like, one of the wider ones that had a lot of, like, gray stone, like.
Oh, yep, I've got.
I think it was maybe the last one or next to last one.
Yeah, yeah.
My fear is we were going towards a look of like, country club building.
The printer is hard to.
Which I know.
What's interesting, Joe, is the, and I, when, when I saw this picture of the stone, I was like, stone now, really? Uh, that was my first thought, and when I realized the country club, I won't say the subdivision's name, has a beautiful stone front, and I do like a stone front, I just, everyone needs to know that that stone front will add cost. Now, it's just the front.
That's a lot of stone, too.
It's a lot of stone. But now, what's interesting is, real stone, like Tennessee fieldstone, applied to that front veneer, my cost isn't much more than vertical siding, because that wording blank is expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The problem is, that's me being honest, saying, hey, this, my cost isn't that much difference, the bidders aren't gonna do that.
One of these two?
Stone front.
Right.
And the adders don't be hired.
The columns had gray?
Or any jacked up higher, just because we're government.
We're a town, because, yeah.
I mean, if, if we have to, sorry, we're not hearing our conversation, go ahead.
Yeah, Brian.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, if we have to stick with this front facade, I mean, I like something more like that. I think the stone's way too much, and I think if you get into all these crazy colors, I think it just seems to be simple and clean.
Now, let me ask you this.
If you can't take this.
Thinking, thinking down the road and stuff, if we ever do a town hall center, do we kinda have the, like, a downtown corridor and stuff? Do you, do you look at going off of that, where if you are gonna allow small stores or retail or something like that, that it becomes like that, because I remember you showing a picture of a lot of little cottage-type places that were small. I mean, the problem is, is will they work, will, will people go there and stuff, but, I mean.
This is a great question, because if, because if you look at the old buildings that are there now, if you go look at them, their, their siding houses with a lot of these same features, not to say those two, I'm only thinking of those two houses, the, the two little ones.
Yeah.
Right outside the rounded up.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They complement this very well.
Right.
It's not to say those people will keep them looking like that.
Right.
Right now, they look like they were complimented, and that design, and I'm not trying, you know, it's out of the bag, I like that one, okay? But, that design, if you, if you go to, is Waverly, the big new subdivision, the big new commercial development.
Yeah.
Drive in there, you'll see those features, there's, there's, you pick up an Architectural Digest, you go to Lowe's and pick up any of those magazines.
Right, right, no, I, I.
This two hundred year old design is hot right now, very hot, and Chip and Joanna Gaines have helped get it there. I don't watch their show, I can't afford to.
I don't even know Chip and Joanna.
Every time I see a picture like that, she's standing next to me, so. But again, if, if three of you said, no, Robert, we like the stone, or we like the other one, I don't, I just, it's, it's a vision that's been around for a decade, I'd just like to see it come to fruition.
I feel like we could probably work with either, but I'll tell you, well, if you didn't read it.
Can we take a quick straw poll?
Sure, if you're up to it, yeah.
Kim just dedicated, she likes the same one I do.
Okay.
Which one, number six?
Well, yeah, I think it's, I think it's number six, not with the.
The popular, modern agrarian style.
Yeah, but not the one with the white columns, because it, it doesn't match. Much as I, as much as I want white columns.
So you can get your little bit of stone in there.
So this one right here?
Yeah.
Well, this one has stone at the bottom.
Right.
Which is a traditional.
Yeah, but I want, I want columns desperately, but it's not gonna work. They look silly to me.
It's gonna be added and subtracted anytime. So Kim and I like six, that's the one I like too, Kim. Anybody else?
Who's that say?
Well, the fact that you agree on something says a lot.
I'd like to think it adds value, to my opinion.
I mean, I.
We agreed on a couple things, though.
You're liking, you're liking six because of the color, or? Because, I mean, they're basically all the same.
Now, keep in mind, it's like that house gun here, and what I just did to my house, so, I like six. But it's not just because of the colors, it's because of the design, although I will tell you.
Well, looking, looking at the design.
Black metal roofing won't go out of style, that's the good news.
Right.
You stick green on there, you're in trouble.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking, like I was looking at four, because it's got more brick, but I mean, it's basically the exact same house.
It's the exact same house.
It's the same house, but just four different stones. Which I'm not against, it's just expensive, it's probably gonna be expensive.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's different, it's just a different facade, whether you use brick or, you know, but it's the exact same.
In reality, as a council four years from now, if we all added on either four or six, a council four years from now could say, you know what? I, I found this old picture, and I want it to look like that. And you, that siding could be removed.
Oh, yeah.
And the stone added, or vice versa. It wouldn't be cheap, but it could be done without changing anything structurally. Because the stone is an applied stone, it's stucced.
Right.
It's not like a stacked stone, right?
Correct, it's not stacked.
When did you change your house? When did you change your house?
Over the span of the last six months.
So, no, no offense, but I drive by your house all the time, and I didn't notice it, and I'm gonna look now.
That's good news.
Well, no, because I thought it was changing for a reason, but I didn't notice that you changed it, so.
Probably because it was so dirty, that you couldn't tell.
I'm gonna look now.
I was gonna say, I gotta drive by now.
Yeah, no, yeah, well. What's that address again, so I don't.
So I'm gonna relay to you what Kelly just said, and I think this reflection happened at the planning board back in May, I don't know when.
We were making forward progress on plan six.
I'm sorry, I just wanted, I didn't wanna, I didn't want to.
I know that we're about to go backwards.
Why?
We are.
I didn't want to exclude you all from what she said, so she was just saying that, sorry, Robert, this, that, that the planning board would have said yes to this, and I think they did, didn't this go to the planning board, that, that original sketch?
Yes.
I don't know.
Oh, that was.
Maybe back in July, or some other time before that.
Yeah, that roof.
Is, is, is that before the roof was?
That would change the construction plans.
I just wanted to be sure you knew what they were saying.
Okay, so that would change the construction plans, wouldn't it?
It does, so just so you know, it was when this came out that I tried to put the pediment on the gable front, on.
Which would also change.
Right, exactly.
But the architect changed this without telling us that that would then change the construction plans. Like, it would change the footprint, but it would then change the construction plans, which.
So, and then, to your point, if we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, if we take a straw poll right now, is anyone in favor of potentially changing the, the plans to spend a hundred thousand dollars? And I think you would get no.
Right.
But, that's just me, and I agree.
Here's another way to look at it, Joe, rather than redesign the plans for a hundred grand.
Change the facade.
If you do a change order during the process, and it costs you five grand to put on like that picture you showed me. That's, that's one thing.
Right.
Ninety-five thousand dollars saved.
Okay, so Nick, which one do you like?
I mean, I like four, because I like a little more brick, I'm not crazy about the color or the rendition of the way the brick looks there, it's dark.
Yes, but see, you can see it, I don't know.
I mean, you could, sure you could use a lighter color brick, or, you know.
Yeah, like the stone, I mean, when I did this, I just, I just picked whatever to fill it in, you still have to choose the stones, choose the stretch around the color. It was just the idea of.
All right, two votes for six, one vote for four, Mary, what say you?
I think so many of them.
What say you?
What say you?
Yeah, you're not allowed to go backwards, you can't back page.
Um, okay, so.
Wait, didn't you wanna take the straw poll?
Oh, yeah, me, no.
Oh, it was Robert?
I wanted a straw poll.
Because he was winning.
Well, I figured Mary had two. And is number four a brick or stone?
Stone.
I can't really see it.
Let me.
Stone.
Stone.
I just wanna make sure you knew it was stone, Nick, because you said brick.
Yeah.
So you want to, see, see, stone for me looks like
Huh?
A country club.
You like number four?
Joe, are you saying?
I mean, I like, I like number six too, because they're the same house, it's just the color.
I, you know what, I'm just here to break a tie.
It's just, what color lipstick do you like?
I can't vote.
Oh, you, you still get to have an opinion.
I know.
For the record, in case you didn't read, the main thing I realized was when we were looking at any other version, whatever came to the planning board before, the initial one, that white, it was, to me, it was a lot of that white trim and those multi-colors that just totally threw me off. And so, all I really wanted to do was find out if we darkened, it doesn't have to be this color stone, but if we darken the trim primarily, and even the grills on the windows and the casings, whether we could just give it a little richer look, as opposed to the opposite, I guess. Um, I don't...
Sorry.
Well, like, Joe, that's all lipstick. Joe was right. That's all lipstick.
But I, and I don't know if this is gonna be a cool thing to say, but I'll repeat that I think at the end of the day, it's, it is much more economical if we really find ourselves stuck, and we want to go back to seeing that pediment, and that's at least better than nothing. Going for a change order is going to be a lot less expensive than two-hundred thousand dollar plans. So I feel like just getting forward to get some estimates through the RFP is probably the most important thing that we could do.
Well, be clear, it's not an estimate. It will be...
I mean, not cost, right, right, sorry.
I think where we're at right now is we could offer up these other two options, right? I can tell you right now that any builder, whether he'll admit it or not, can build option six for the same price as the set of plans. All this is doing is taking the siding and turning it vertically. On the plans, it's a lot of horizontal siding. This is vertical siding. It's the same material. This might even be a little cheaper, because this stuff comes in four-by-eight panels.
And let me just say for the record that, short of spending any more time than I already spent, I'm sure we could come up with a million variations on the lapboard, back, board and baton combination, right?
We can see it all. So which one do you like?
Your ass still asking? Uh, I don't know which one is Joe's.
Um, I haven't picked, so that picture...
No, no, Mary's gonna go first.
I know, I know, but I was wondering that one picture she showed you, the one that your wife fell in love with and stuff. So that looks...
That house down there.
Right. You're, you're saying that can be done on six?
Six looks a lot like that house.
Right, that's what I'm looking at, yeah. So, but I'm not gonna choose.
He wants to go last.
Yet.
He wants to.
Look, I don't, you guys went through a big fight. I don't get to vote, so it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
You're, so which one do I like best? I actually like nine.
You don't have a nine.
I was gonna say, there's a nine.
Let's see, no?
You've got one, three, seven.
So then you'll have to guess. No, I'm kidding. I'll find it.
I think you like six, Mary.
I think it's six?
Yeah.
I have a question when you open.
I didn't care as much till Kim liked the two. Now I care.
You're one vote, you're one vote away. Come on.
So four, or, um...
Four is Nick's choice.
Yeah, I don't mind four. I actually don't mind, um, I don't like the shutters on that.
It's all black and white. It's hard to tell.
I know.
See, I don't like the nude columns on four, because they're nude on pictures.
Oh, you don't?
Uh-uh.
Do you have pictures? Colored pictures?
So, well, that's funny, because I don't mind three either. It's, it's columns, but they're stone columns.
Yeah, I like three.
That looks too much like a house.
Columns.
Three looks like a house.
They all look like a house.
Well, one...
Just so we're clear, the columns are, are nothing. You can change them three times.
Right.
Spend a couple of grand.
Right.
And they could be different col, see, I'm trying to imagine that we still...
They should be one of each.
There we go.
And the railing's not required, because the...
Is it not?
No.
Oh, good, okay.
Well, it shouldn't be. The way that topo is out there, you have to be over three foot to require a railing.
Hold on, wait, make me repick.
Thirty inches. Joe, you wanna go?
No, not yet. I'm just, but I have, I'm, again, I'm thinking down the road, down what, what we envision for the downtown, downtown center, and what we allow, because we, I think we can control, correct me if I'm mistaken, but control what that looks like from its design. So, so what do you want it to look, you want it to be all brick and stone going down through there, or would you rather have it? Because think about what else is there now that is not gonna change, is the church.
Is.
Right? This church, the other church, the one has brick and stuff, but this church is, you know, so I'm looking at it from that perspective, and it's like, it should be all sort of similar if I'm, you know...
You, you kinda wanna set the tone, I guess, you know, with that.
Well... And that's, that's all I'll say. But I'm trying to get, I'm trying to look at what envision, what this downtown center even is or becomes, and what we allow, and what it looks like. Should I stop? I'll stop. Mary just can't decide.
I, I honestly, because I could see so many options. So let me just say this. I, given that, I feel like the one thing that doesn't lock us into a style is the stone. Only because it feel, you can change the stone, but stone is so classic, right? I mean, it's never gonna go out of style. And that's my
Actually.
inclination.
I think the complete opposite. Stone...
I do too. I changed my stone in my thing. I went from stack to on top. I, I still was stone, but I changed it because stacking, so I think stone can be dated where this could be different. So I would disagree.
Okay.
Respect for me.
And that's okay. I just, to me, I could, that's just, so which one do you like?
What can I say? It doesn't matter, because you're only one vote away from, uh...
Let, let me say this about the stone, too. Joe's right. If we're looking for what, what we've already talked about. In previous ninety-six plans, previous sketches, the ambition along here was always sort of nichey, much like the old houses. A lot like Three Pond Acres. But every house you've built over there is a farm-style siding, vertical or horizontal. You've even got reasons, which is, is a whole white brick.
It, it is white. I think it's white brick, yeah.
It's actually, I think it's stucco, I think, reasons, and, and the pillars, I, I think. I'm pretty sure.
I don't think so, but it's, I'll leave that alone.
I think.
But I think stone, to me, the stone will just stand out. That and reversing that one is much more expensive than reversing siding.
It's white brick.
White brick.
To yank all that stone off.
It's white brick?
It looks like white brick.
I knew, I knew a two-hundred-year-old house wasn't stucco. The, uh, the stone to tear that off and then go back to siding and go with a different material is expensive. Siding going to a different material later is not.
And I understand what you're saying, and then maybe, this is just me being dated, but the idea of having, like, of a old world, one of the things that's always been rare to have, right, is brick and stone. Like, if you go back, go to Europe or you go to places in the world, they will tell you that to finally have a home made out of stone or brick, right, as opposed to something else, maybe that's just my upbringing.
You could, it's just the front. The sides of this, which are not drawn, are with this side.
I understand.
So if this stone would look like when you drive through these neighborhoods, and you see a siding house, a brick house, and then a house with stone accents, but the sides are siding, that's what this would be.
No, I know. I realize that.
Just want to be clear. It's not like...
I mean, I could've done all four sides, but I didn't hope you wanted to.
You know, it's stone all around. That's not what this would be.
No, I know.
And from the corner, you'd see the side.
From the corner, you'd see the siding.
Right, you'd see the siding.
You'd see both sides.
And...
And again, I didn't care fifteen minutes ago.
I noticed.
You guys aren't texting each other, are you?
Nope. I mean, my apples.
So...
Well, I mean, again, to me, they're the same house. The stone, the facade is a little different. I mean, so, to me, six or four, I... Six wouldn't, wouldn't throw me. I mean, it's not, it's not gonna, I'm not gonna sleep over with six instead of four.
So you're on six now, Nick? Let me tell you what my goal is. Either way, we're going to, we would go to RFP with the original plans, right? If we can right now eliminate one of the two options, instead of giving contractors three things they have to put a number on, if we're just giving them two, or if we're just saying, "It's these plans, but this facade," that's less confusing for a contractor and for an administrator and a partner. But if we can't do that, that's okay.
The way I'm hearing it, basically, one, two, three, four, and five would basically be out, because they're all brick. Each have bricks, so I mean, if we don't like the brick...
I don't not like the, I don't not like the...
That kills all the first five, anyway.
Well, that's the, and that, so just letting you say, I just picked a stone that I could use in my Photoshop, right? I mean, you can pick from a plethora of different stones. This ended up being a little darker than I expected it to be, but I wasn't gonna spend more than the ten hours I'd already spent.
So...
Like you said, you could go white brick.
You could change that, yeah, exactly.
Hold on a second. So let me ask you this. Could you do a white brick? But I know white brick is very expensive. I know it's more expensive than regular brick.
It is. I love to.
We had a person build a, recently, in fire, something, and they built it with a regular brick, and then they painted it, which was...
Here's the...
How'd that work?
I just want you to know that...
White brick is in, if you drive through Firethorn, that house on the left, is that the one you're talking about?
No.
On the way to your house, for the summer.
Right. But they painted that. They painted that.
People are putting it up and then just painting it, but you can also, I'll, I'll pull up a picture to show you.
Schmear it?
You can do a white brick, but now, understand, if you're gonna, if you're gonna build it with a brick, you've just changed the plans, because a brick stacks. There's applied bricks, but it'd be like applying the stone. If you're gonna build it with white brick all around, you're changing the foundation.
Don't necessarily have to, because they make a product that's a quarter-inch brick.
Well, that's the picture I'm gonna show you, because...
Because I have that in my basement.
Because my wife saw that in a magazine, too. That's a half-inch white brick. And it's, it's just applied.
That's pretty.
And it's funny, because even with the white, I was thinking white brick would be better than a board and baton. That's just me, but it is very expensive.
It's, it's just stuck on...
I think I've seen this from, that's right, because I was asking you about the brick. Yeah, that's right. I remember you showing that to me. It's nice.
So... I will say, this.
And that could be on the outside?
Yeah. Yeah, you still put it on the room wall and...
So Christina, what did we say, forty-five minutes?
Are we still on A?
We are.
This is quarter inch. Not me, but, but that's a quarter inch which you can put. You don't need full bricks. You don't need to...
That's how they did it. They applied it by, basically, it's tile.
Okay.
Is what it is.
But we're trying, Mary, if, if I may, if we're trying to move forward, we could beat this up. It's been beat up for ten years, right? We could beat it up some more. But if we're trying to move forward with the plans we have, without a redraw, any of these options that are here will work. But we can't go with all of them. If we're gonna start talking about changing to a white brick or changing columns, we could be, continue to have this discussion for the next few months.
But I thought you, at least when we talked about it, we, we can put two bid options in, right?
You can, but to Melanie's point, a little bidder on said option is wins. You can't, I originally thought you could put it out, but again, I, I don't get into these RFPs. You could put it out and then pick based on price, but if someone comes in with a little bid...
But the, all bidders are gonna provide a bid for each level, right?
So now you proved to a bidder that you didn't pick a facade based on a number. That's, I think that could be a problem. I could be wrong.
Well, you would. I, Melanie, I could be wrong, but I think you can base alternates based off of price. So you can, for instance, we could have the, this option as the primary with an alternate for stone or vice versa, and then choose whichever one based on the price of either one we go. I could be wrong, but if, if that's the way Cantor wants to go, we can ask the architect Thursday when we go, and if that's the case, we can, we can prepare the alternate bids like that. Have you been involved? Oh, I was just involved in one where the, one of the bidders didn't fill out one of the options, and then one of them, like, it was zero, but it, that really meant no bid, but a zero doesn't mean a bid. And it was just, the more options you have, then the more room you get for someone to have a legal challenge that you did not pick the lowest response or bidder. I think it means, if you decide your option before you open the bid, then I think you're okay. And she's right, and I think it, it could potentially cause a problem with not having enough bidders to respond, because in that case, you wouldn't have a responsive bidder if they didn't respond appropriately. But back to your point, I mean, if we decide to go with six, and then we decide later that that's not what we want to do, we could do a change order and add the facade, the change in the facade. So it's really wherever y'all want to go. We just, we need to structure the RFP with a base first.
Well, if you want to go RFP with, with a stone, with four and six, I don't have a problem with that, but for the majority, we know, we know the stone will be more. I think we can all agree on that. So if we took a vote right now, I know two of us would say six. So the question, you know, we can either put it to a vote, or if you don't want to know the answer right now, and you definitely want to put it out with RFP with one of the stone options and one of the siding options in the original, that would be three numbers that would come back.
Not the original.
Well, the original, because it's the, the actual plan. That's what I mean by that. But no, to your point, we could say ignore the front and the side. It's gonna be less of the two options. We can do that, as long as we're...
We're clear to the bidders.
...have to make a decision prior to opening the bids, I guess.
I feel like it would be less messy if we could just decide. It's gonna be so, it's gonna be messy.
This way gives you more time to make a decision, that you apparently can't come to right now.
So are you on, are you on four, like with Nick?
I'm on nine. I, I took a bunch of them and, and...
Here, I'm advocating for, for us to make a decision. I don't care what it is, and you have option nine.
Sorry. It's actually the same as, it's the same as Nick's, only I don't have the, you see the taupe? I don't have the taupe around the window. I thought I had that in the other panel.
Look at me.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
Nick, were you four?
Yeah, Ren was four.
So Ren?
And, and it's the same. It's more or less the same. So it's four, yeah.
Different color?
Is it, yeah, different casing.
Can we hear your answer now, Joe?
Um, I, you're telling me we can get to, and I'm thinking, again, long-term and stuff, of what that downtown corridor looks like. I'm going with six.
So, now it seems to me that it's your...
Barbara's like, all right, let's take one now. I don't think he was expecting that.
Just move it, move it on, move it on.
It seems to me, Joe, that, and it's your, it's, uh, we have, now it's due to send it to RFP with both options, despite knowing three was just like...
I, I, I think that's fine. I mean, it's, you know, but it, it's, it's gonna be up to you. You guys want to vote to send it, two options.
It's gonna be messy.
Two options. I, I think either way, we have to come, to her point, we have to come to a decision before which way we're gonna go. And then, maybe, maybe that, maybe, maybe by saying that, we got two options. Maybe by, what I said, they sharpen their pencil a little bit more, because they are, the thing is, is before we open the bid, we'll have to call, almost have to call meetings, and we're gonna go with this one. But if we tell them a month ahead of time that we're going with stone, and they're, they, they prop up the stone, I, I look at it as, and tell me if this is wrong, is if we have two options, that we go in there, stone and, and the, number four? But then we call a special meeting to open up the bid, and we announce on the agenda which way we're going. and we announce on the agenda which way we're going, you know, that, that, that may have them, while they're doing their bidding process, not necessarily inflate the stone like they would, and, because they don't know if we're going with it yet.
See, Mary, Joe's great with one- This makes sense, we could go to RFP with both options. Someone who really wants the job is gonna throw the same number on, because I can tell you, my cost isn't that much more for the stone, on just the front.
It's probably more labor.
Just a little, good bit of labor.
Yeah, that's where the cost is.
I agree, I, I do, I think, and it's hard for me to grasp, because I didn't expect it, but I know that we, I just, I'm a little, I know that back in the, you know, when we did the park, we had to bid out certain, the farm, and there were, we put options in there, I'm just trying my best to remember how those options worked, and-
When I bid on the bathrooms, I did the bathrooms, it's cold. The veneer was some synthetic, they picked some cheap, nasty something. My cost to do real stone was the same, and I just gave them real stone. It's, it's Tennessee field stone. And it looks good, and it'll last forever. So I guess my point there was, on those, they try to get specific based on an architect's suggestion, a builder's suggestion, a builder's suggestion, or architect's suggestion, who's pulling selections out of catalogs. He's not, he's not hitting the pavement, you know, he works in an office, he's got a number, he puts a model number, makes his job easier, right? Makes the bidding process easier. But in reality, I said, forget it, and I put, the town won a real stone, they have real stone. So, I think you go to bid with the pictures, but if you're gonna do stone, you just tell them you wanna Tennessee field stone or comparable, and those selections can do, we have time, based on the schedule. But when it comes to the siding, there is no-
There's no room, really, so?
You tell them, you want hardy or certainty, cementation siding, vertical lap, sixteen inches apart, whatever it is, whatever, whatever you want, and that's it.
That is it.
That's just it.
So-
And the material on the non-stone is hardy plank, or no?
That's what I would do.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, too.
That's what I did in the house, with that white house.
It's colored all the way through, really, because it's, you don't have to paint often, as often.
No, you can buy it painted, but just painted is just as easy and just as cheap, it's the same price.
Right, but my understanding on that, that the hardy plank, you, if, it, it's, it's less maintenance as far as, because I think, I know-
It won't rot, it's got a fifty-year warranty, um, it's resistant to salt spray.
Right. Okay.
But those of you with speech prices know, that's important. It's as durable as stone, it's just the paint, it'll have to be repainted every four to five years.
Okay. Um, so, can we come to, can we make a motion of what we want to do, or are we, are we there yet, or, so I'm trying to keep to the nine thirty?
Motion to go to RFP with the existing plans, but with only two veneer options, four and six.
Okay.
Is that what we're all saying?
I, I feel like that, that would be, yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
Columns can be changed, but stuff like that, that's no big deal.
Let's see what they say, I mean, if it ends up, right, I mean, I don't know, if it, we don't know how this, how about this? In the meantime, if we find out more information about the way the bid will work, and we feel, you know what, it's gonna be better to pull one of those options off the table, then Christina can pull us, but for now, for the-
I think we both feel confident that just two options you're okay with, it's when you have like, four or five, and then you see like, it's TBD, four, zero, or they choose not to bid on something, and then you're trying to interpret, is that, are they doing that for free, or do they need not to bid? And then they only have seventy-two hours to withdraw the bid, so then you can interpret it how you like it, and then there's a process for hearing. So, if it's just, if it's clear, right, and it's just between two options, I think, I mean, they're gonna bid on both, they want to draw that.
But I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily, not to interrupt, but think we have to announce which way we're gonna go. We can do, we can do that at the last, right before the bid opening, is that correct?
You can do it after.
I think we can do it after.
Or you can do it af-
Yeah, because you can see the option with the stone might be too expensive, that you don't wanna consider that.
Right, no matter who the bidder is, right?
So you take that option off the board, and you do the lowest responsible bidder for the, I think, underlying, and to Melanie's point-
As long as you think we're okay.
It is way more complicated to do it that way, but it's fine, it's just knowing that we're gonna have a little bit more time needed in the establishment of what the lowest responsive, responsive bidder is, because you've gotta look at all those alternates.
Right.
So, it is complicated to her, to her point, to make sure we're, we're-
Okay.
But the way you guys are doing it, it's, it's not, if you gave them all ten, we're gonna, yeah, that'd be bad.
So, could I have a motion?
Any contractor, you know, I'm used to it, any contractor is used to hearing, yeah, I want that house, but how much more would it be? We're not asking how much more, because to Joe's point, if they really want it, heck, they may come in at the same number for both.
Right.
So, I think that we have to define, and I could be wrong, but I think when we do the RFP, we have to define a base model and establish what those alternates are, so if y'all are okay with us establishing, establishing the base for number six, and an alternate for number four, that'll show us what the add-on would be for the stone. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Nick, it's been a long time coming for you, do you wanna make a motion?
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I guess it would just be the RFP with four and six, based on staff. Adhering to the RFP process, something like that?
Do you want me to-
Four and six options.
Yeah, if you want me to, let me look, I think I sketched it out somewhere, I sketched it a few things. I'm gonna, I'm jumping ahead to look at the timeline to see what was in there. Because what we needed to do, right Christina, was we just needed to, I think you had the word approve an elevation, right?
Yes.
Is that what you wanted?
Approve the elevation, and then you could direct me to work with the engineer, I'm sorry, the architect, to establish an invitation to bid for option, uh, six, as today.
Ready? There's your opportunity, she just said it.
Yeah.
What? She wants to give him the option of making an motion.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
So moved.
I got you, I, no, so moved, I was-
Say that again.
I didn't, I didn't hear her say off.
Go ahead, say it again.
God, I forgot what I said. Um, so let the, the elevation approval- As a base for elevation six, allow the administrator to contract, to discuss invitation to bid language.
I'm gonna stop you there, only because I know that that motion has tons of stuff in it, maybe we can, do we wanna just make the motion just for the elevation first? And take care of that agenda item? Sorry, okay.
Approve select elevation.
Elevation four as a base, and allow an invitation to bid with six.
Approve select elevation four?
Six, I'm sorry, six as a base.
Six as a base, yes.
As the base, okay.
Four as an alternate.
With four as an alternate.
Four as alternate.
Keep it simple.
And then allow administrator to work with-
Work with the architect to establish invitation to bid.
To, to what?
Invitation to bid.
Further discussion. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna be a pain.
Congratulations, Nick.
When I went through the meeting minutes, I saw a semi-approval, but I didn't see like, a really clear approval. So just to be sure, I feel like we should reaffirm the approval of the construction plans.
Okay.
And the final elevations.
Okay.
However, we do it. My only worry is, I wanna make sure that that reaffirming, you know, because it's been from DRB and back and forth, that we have that very clearly in the minute somewhere, that's, that's all.
Do you want me to make that mention?
Sure, just to, for-
Further discussion?
Reaffirm approval, do you want me to say, oh, sorry?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you already said-
Village Hall construction plans, and elevation si- six, and alternate elevation four, including all amendments required by state and county agencies.
Amendments by state and county agencies?
Yes, because there's been some amendments since that.
And is it, you said all elevation plan?
Elevation six and six.
Construction approvals.
And alternate four.
Right, but I, you're referring to the original?
Yeah, so I had, I approved, so I made a motion to approve those construction plans, and that, those construction plans have that original elevation in-
Do we, do we, should we have construction plans, you know, dated such, such a date, or approved, pre-approved?
Oh, those, oh, you mean the date, those were August thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
We're saying construction plans, sounds kinda nebulous.
Okay, I, I can, I can add that in, so reaffirm approval of the Village Hall construction plans as approved on, well, as reviewed on August thirty-one, twenty seventeen.
In seventeen?
Yep, including all amendments required and/or made by state and county agencies.
Okay, so we wanna put that, okay, all right.
Just to seal it.
Okay, further discussion. Halls in favor? The motion passes, a minus. Um, next up, we have discussion, consideration, approval, proposed timeline for construction.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Call for a five-minute recess.